Tuesday, June 10th, and we are on day two of an exciting budget week. We're going to start as we always do with the invocation and the pledge. The invocation will be led by Pastor Brock Patterson in the Longboat Island Chapel, and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Mike Ron. Please rise if you are able.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you great thanks for this day, Lord, and for this opportunity that we have come together. Lord, I pray not only for those on this commission who will be making decisions, but also, Lord, for those who are gathered here who have put in an awful lot of work. Lord, all of these people are doing your work. They are all doing something that you have called them to do, and I ask your blessings upon them, and in these times they have together, give them wisdom and give them peace. Lord, we ask your blessings upon all those who are taking care of our community around us, especially the men and women in our fire departments, police departments, medical personnel, and of course, our armed forces. Bless them, bless their families, and bless us in this time we have together. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. It's your show.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Administrator, County Attorney. It's a wonderful day here in Manatee County. Today, we're going to be presenting the constitutional officers and the judicial programs presented. I just want to have a couple of housekeeping items that were, I was supposed to bring back to you from yesterday's work session. The very first one was the request to bring altogether a list of what is funded by stormwater so that you can understand the comprehensive concept of what are the efforts that we are providing for such. So, I had provided to all of you a list. Can I have the docket? Please. Can I have the docket, please? And this one is always in the SharePoint. It's also on the SharePoint side under revenues. Can I have the doc camera? This is also on the SharePoint side, on the revenues, on the bottom part, under Tier Two, it's Stormwater Management. This is a breakdown of what is funded by stormwater costs. You can see the breakdown of all the departments that are funded with these resources. A total of $15.6 million for a total. That was a question that Commissioner McCann had requested yesterday, so he wanted that comprehensive list. Just wanted to show it for today. Second, as another housekeeping item, is the list that I was supposed to bring for Development Services, for the Development Services. So, she presented eight positions under her list. She's got the Flood Plane Review Specialist, the Plans Examiner/Inspections Officer, two of each, one Planner, two, one Planning and zoning tech, two, one Planning and zoning tech, two, each one at $90,000, and then the Engineer Specialist, two, for a total of $859,965, the impact. This impact is dual between the Building Department and the Unincorporated MSTU because her planning fees also are incorporated and funded by the Unincorporated MSTU. So, I also wanted to establish, so that $427,000 that you see on the unincorporated side is going to come out of the reserves in the budget stabilization. Currently, there is $785,000 of a budget stabilization, which, as you know, that is the beyond reserves, beyond the 20%. So, that is where that pot of money is going to come from.
Yeah, I stand by what I said, Yasha. I'm pulling all of it. They're massively understaffed.
All right. I just need direction to move forward with bringing those into the budget, and in the July 31st reconciliation, I will bring them forward.
I pulled it, and I think under his breath, Commissioner Ron.
I'll second that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We will make the corresponding adjustments.
All right.
Also, finally, sorry, I'm kind of slow. I brought the pulled item list, and this one were all that you asked me to bring, the One Grant Writer, One Grant Administrator for Government Relations as a pulled item from unfunded to funded. So, these are the efforts, that is the total. And then also, I have the pulling of the nine positions from Lakewood Ranch. Those were the impact of the Sunday Hours extension. So, that is the full impact with the board's request and direction. We can make those adjustments for the July 31st, if you choose.
I mean, those were decided yesterday, so.
I just wanted to bring it.
I fundamentally disagree with the library part of it, but I was away for eight minutes. I got split in. But everyone seconded it, so I don't think I could have advocated for.
All right. I just wanted you to see the overall impact, and we will move forward with making those adjustments in the July 31st reconciliation. All right. So, with that said, I have moved into our today's Constitutional Officers Work Session.
Just a clarifying question to the rest of the board. Yesterday, I'd requested to pull the road resurfacing projects. Is there a second to that distinct request that we increase funding for those?
The road resurfacing?
There's no second, that's fine.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So, you want to pull that as well?
Yes, for.
My apologies.
Correct. For all major and minor road resurfacing projects. We need to revisit that.
Beyond what was already funded?
Yes. So, I'd like to see what the real number is, similar to a line of questioning we have with another department. I think that's underfunded there.
Just a question. Are you including the small bridge projects as well?
I'm happy to if you want those there.
I didn't, I'm just, I'm asking if that's your intention.
No, that's not. Those are separate line items.
We are just making it rain over here.
Well, I did mention it yesterday. I don't think it was clarified, so. So, it would be the four line items for two major road resurfacing line items that I saw yesterday, and then two minor road resurfacing efforts.
That were unfunded?
Well, they were funded, but I felt they were underfunded.
Can I pull them out at the end of the session, and we can discuss them more in detail? After the constitutionals, we discussion.
Yeah, that's fine afterwards.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Sure. Did anyone second that based on that clarification? Did you still second it?
Did you second it based on the fact that it's funded?
Then the clarification was, it wasn't an unfunded, it was an opinion of underfunding. Are you still seconding his poll? Okay. All right. So, we have a poll by Commissioner Sadek, seconded by Commissioner Ron.
Okay. I just want to clarify. I'll look the document, and I just want to clarify the amount and the item that you are referring to. Okay? We can do that at the end of the session.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can move to the presentation. So, I'm going to start sort of kind of like prefacing on this. Today's presentation of the Constitutional Officers and the Judicial Programs. The county, as per Florida statute, is required to fund certain pieces or in part of the Constitutional Officers. We know it's a clerk of the court, Manatee County Sheriff's Office, property appraiser, supervisor of elections, and the tax collector. On the other side of the judicial programs, we have the Court Administration, guardian ad litem, public defender, and the state attorney. Pursuant to chapter, the Florida statute 29.008 and Article Five, and Manatee County Resolution R 13 dot dash 31, counties are required to fund the cost of the court system, technology as well. Thank you, Danny. Combine the Constitutional Officers' total, an amount of $323 million altogether in this recommended fiscal year '26. Sorry. My apologies. And in combination compared to the milage calculator, it's equivalent to the 4.09 mils into the budget. In addition to funding the portion or in full of their budget, we also have to provide support for their facilities, which we call support costs, facilities and the other operating costs that goes along with it, for a total of $3.8 million. At this point, I just wanted to point out the order of the presentations, and I will just move forward with presenting. In the order of will be clerk of court, supervisor of elections, court administration, state attorney, public defender, guardian ad litem, and sheriff. With that, Mr. Administrator?
So, Angel, if you'd like to come forward. Clerk of the Court's budget's approximately $10.6 million. Her requested positions was nine. I recommended funding six of those nine.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Administrator, Madam County Attorney. I'm Angel Coloneiso, the clerk and comptroller for Manatee County, and with me today is my Director of Finance, Neil Unruh, and my Deputy Director of Finance, Jan Brewer. I'd like to thank you for including the positions that were submitted. I'd like to clarify one little thing, though, that the majority of those positions were part-time positions going to full-time, not brand-new positions, but we thank you for that, including that in the budget. Those are much needed. In the interest of time today, I wanted to focus on three equally necessary positions that we are respectfully asking to be included, and most of them, this is the second time that we're making this ask. Everything that the county cited yesterday in their budget directly impacts the financial operation of the comptroller side. That's the side of our office that works hand-in-hand with your side of the street as well. The county manages their budget, and the comptroller side prepares the accounting, reporting, pays the bills according to law and accounting standards. All of the stats and transactions that the Financial Management Department cited yesterday equally apply to our office because we are aware those transactions eventually come to be processed. Your grants reportedly went up from $100 million to $700 million, and we received those grants to process. So, there is a significant increase there in our finance department. IT yesterday cited the ability to create efficiencies in improving Internet resilience, data security enhancement, and we all know AI is moving quickly and up-and-coming very fast. It's the same for the comptroller role as well. Our IT works with your IT, and whenever we implement finance county projects, joint projects, they all have to work together to come together and connect and make it all work and have a workflow. The county and the comptroller are jointly responsible for the same $2 billion in public money, and the majority of three positions being denied today have been, as I said, denied in the past. So, the first one being the Treasury Clerk. This position is necessary because of the growth in the county's investment portfolio. This department manages the investment portfolio and works with outside investment advisors on the investments. While we do have an investment committee, that committee doesn't manage the day-to-day investments. We get quarterly updates, and then we also, at the end of the year, or at the end of the year, yearly, the committee takes a look at the policy and sees if there are adjustments that need to be made because it's your policy at the end of the day. Of course, it lines up with the law, and there haven't been any significant changes in the law recently. The investment committee's main job is to review that policy yearly and make the recommended changes. This department also handles cash receipts for the county, and it's vital to understand that we hold separate sides of that financial piece. So, what you change on this side impacts the finance side of the street on our side. In the last four years, there have been a significant number of positions added to the county for growth. This year, there were 131 more being presented, and that will hit our Treasury Department heavy because all the cash receipting for the county will go to their department to handle the daily cash receipts. And we've asked for this position last year, and it is $69,000 that we're requesting. The second one is the Business Analyst. We asked for two, and we got one, and we really do appreciate that. But Business Analyst, we really need another Business Analyst. This is a necessity. The county is going to a new finance system, and these positions are instrumental in implementing security measures and workflow and user guides on our side of the street so that we can connect the workflows and do the work seamlessly. This will help improve on-base functionality and maintain current on-base workflows. The county is adding seven positions to technology, and these analysts would work with both IT, our IT and your IT, and ongoing work expected to occur with implementation of the new finance system. And Financial Management just added a Business Analyst to their budget as well. We will be using software that is another layer to protect against growing cyber threats. That's new. If you want to know the details, I can have my finance team speak to that. They just came from a meeting about that recently. The Business Analyst will work on workflows and maximize the potential and capability of that service. Every time we get a software, and it's true for anybody, you're going to have to work it into your workflow and create a workflow for your people to be able to know and work with that software and make it fit your organization. That's what the Business Analyst does. And the total ask for this is $104,000. Our office was a trailblazer in automated court records that involved the use of AI many years ago, before people even used the term AI. My goal is to focus on the use of AI to make the same strides in this area with regard to workflows of our finance department. The more data-driven we become and the more we grow, this is crucial for meeting the demands that come with the boom in the county's transactional growth. Anytime the county wants to implement new software and it relates to the finances, it does require the Business Analyst, and they're backed up with projects right now to be beneficial to that workflow. And the reorganizations, if I heard correctly yesterday, I heard that the county is hinting at, the government relations is hinting at additional reorging to streamline, possibly streamline departments. When a reorg happens here, there are account keys that go with that for budgetary reasons, for payroll reasons. It requires a massive turnaround on our side to input those account keys and reorg everybody on paper, so to speak, or under the hood, if you want to call it that modern day. So, that will add another component that we have to balance in addition to end-of-year because when end-of-year happens and your own, Sheila can tell you, when end-of-year happens, that's the priority for all of us, both sides of the street. So, everything else stops, and whatever we're going to do, whether it's implement changes together, we have to do it on the off-season of the finance. The Public Information Specialist, this is, we have one position for communication. As we've gone along, I don't know what we would do anymore, and I don't know what we did without that position. This is internal and external communication. There are increases in fraudulent practices impacting residents, and we've learned that engagement matters, and it's helpful in educating the public. Our property alert system alone saw a 600% increase in subscribers. This took a large portion of a public information person's time. There's no longer just one platform to release information. As you know, there are various platforms and mediums that she's got to communicate with. Internally, all of the budget that we are requesting is for employees who work in conjunction with and parallel with the county, and we need to update internal communication for onboarding employees, which includes all departments in our budget. We are only asking the county to pay $35,000 for this position. To give you an idea, the county has a department and the growth of 11 people, and we're asking for $35,000 to finance the one position because I want to get an onboarding process that is more communication-based oriented, and I want to get education for the public too, to file an education on how to do things. And again, the fraud, I don't know if you've all heard recently about the text messaging that's gone on with traffic citations. It's nonstop with the fraud that comes out, and we have to constantly let the public know. This person also handles various programs, included with state partners, that requires us to communicate to the public. One example that comes to mind is the office in conjunction with the Office of the Attorney General Hope Card System for Domestic Violence that went into effect this year. We have numerous school tours coming through. Our current PIO works with the historical resources, and I've been asked by some of you how you can help with that communication and putting it out there. This is how this position will help with that strategic communication and plans and generate effective visual and video communications projects and aid in the coordination of community outreach and engagement activities. To give you a little idea, the Ag Museum increased by 154% visitation, and the outreach is increased by 329%. The interactions have increased. We're a victim of our own success. And the Palmetto Park increased by 408% visitation. The Manatee Village increased by 216%, and our outreach has increased by 288%. Additionally, there are the FRS administrative costs that come with the budget. The FRS increases have not been finalized by the state of Florida, but we would ask typically, as we do every year, for that increase as well. Every year, we submit a needs-based budget, and a little over $22 million's been set aside for salaries by the county. Total ask of the three positions that I've mentioned today that weren't recommended are $210,000, and our budget is less than 1% of the county's budget. It's .42%. So, we'd appreciate this board correcting the gap in funding for the past four years and granting the funding in order to keep up with the capacity stated in your own budget presentation this year because that's also the same applicably to this side of the House that gets funded by the board. Everything that your finance department touches eventually is handled by our division as well, but I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for that very detailed analysis. I was going to pull those all for you anyway.
Okay.
But I appreciate the backup. You've put up with a lot from this board for four straight years, and you have asked for these positions in the past. I think I got you two of four last year, or maybe it was the year before after fighting with people for it. I don't know. Nonetheless, you've asked for these before. You've been working short-staffed to make this work. You touch a lot of things. You do have a very tight budget. You're very considerate of your budget, so I was going to pull all three of those for you.
Thank you.
Anyway.
I'll second that.
Or third.
I'll second that, especially the Treasury Clerk.
I appreciate that. And I know they appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Next is our supervised election. Mr. Farrington has budgets approximately $3.9 million, and he is requesting zero positions.
And you'll get them. I'll try to find the line item for painting walls for PR purposes.
Good man!
Yeah, he's on Zoom. No, he just said, "good man." Oh, wait, Tal, are you going to say something?
Again, Scott Farrington, your supervisor of elections. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, for allowing me to come before you. As you can see from the budget, we are asking for less than was asked for last year. We've gone through the budget, looked at contracts, facilities, all that, and feel very comfortable with this. What I'm going to actually present to you today is a little bit off-topic of budget. It's very finance-related, but I am going to ask you, or actually warn you, that in the near future, I'm going to be coming before you with a request to buy new voting equipment. Our current tabulators specifically are 10 years old. They are electronics, so if you can imagine having a 10-year-old computer in your house, it's time to get a new one. This ask is about $1 million. We have 70 precincts. I need 100 tabulators to cover the precincts, the early voting sites, and then also our central count systems in our office. So to compensate for this $1 million, what you'll see in this 3.9 million is $500,000 of that is for this million-dollar purchase. And then on top of that, out of this current budget, which is a little over $4 million, I will be returning approximately $500,000 from the current budget to compensate. So out of this million-dollar ask, I'm basically compensating for it from this year's budget and also the next year's budget is also, has that $500,000 in there. So I'm really not asking you for any additional money, and on top of that, I'm lowering my budget.
I see. Now, you and I spoke about this at your office. So you still have $500,000 of that budget pop from last year for your office prior to you holding your office.
Correct.
So you're holding that money rather than spending that money with the intention of purchasing these, and that covers half of it, and the other half of it's already reflected in your current year request, which is already lower than last year's request.
Correct.
So you're not asking, you're not going to come back to us asking for money. You're just going to clarify how you're repurposing existing money.
Exactly, and part of what we'll be coming back with, as a quirk of statute, the board must approve this purchase. I need to go through the county procurement department to make this purchase because of the way the statute is written. It has to go through a county procurement. So in all honesty, this will be between the finance and the procurement department. I don't know whether there'll have to be a budget amendment to give this money back to the county so that the county can purchase it, or it can just come out of my budget. But either way, the money is there.
Okay. Well, you're not asking for anything, so there's not a whole lot we can do with your budget today, but we'll wait for you to bring back your budget amendment adjustment.
I was hoping to get that done before break, but it most likely won't happen.
You've got nine days.
Yeah, it won't happen, so it'll hopefully be shortly after the break, late July, early August.
If it's a time sensitivity and why you need it to be done, we can get it done by...
No, there's not, there's not that level of time sensitivity. One of the reasons I want to do this now is because of the cost, and part of the cost, part of the reason for this is we have been warned that because of different economic factors, if we wait two years, which is what we would have to do, then the price is going to jump probably 25%. So the way the manufacturer has basically told, explained it to us is there is a, they have a stock. Once they run out of that stock and they have to go back to manufacturing, that's when the cost is. So we would like to get it in, but we've been told as long as we do it before, as long as we enter the contract before the fiscal year, we'll be good.
Fiscal year starts October 4th. We have a, our next regular meeting after break is July 29th.
Right.
Which gives more than sufficient time, so I'm sure we can get it on the calendar at that point.
Again, working with the, you know, the finance and the procurement department, we'll get that on the calendar.
All right. Good deal.
And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, next up is Court Administration. Chief Judge Diana Moreland, Kimberly Miller, trial court administrator. Their budget's a little over 2.1 million. Their positions requested is also zero. It is interesting, though, that nine of their existing positions do run through the county's payroll.
Correct. Good morning, everyone. Kim Miller, Court Administrator. I did send a presentation, which we can really fly through because Sheila did a good job explaining it all at the beginning. Go ahead.
There's a virus.
Go ahead. We have 15 judges that are based here in Manatee County. We have 32 in the circuit. I think most of you know we're a three-county circuit, Manatee, Sarasota, and DeSoto. We support 19 courtrooms, five hearing rooms. Pretty much all the technology in the Judicial Center we support. We also have 80 judges, or 80 employees that work there. As Sheila referred, 29.008 is the statute that says the county's responsible for funding certain things of the court. In red, we have the computer, network, systems, and IT highlighted because that was really our primary ask this year for you. Next. And as Sheila indicated, our budget process with you guys is a little different than some of the other departments. Florida statute requires that our budget request be submitted by June 1st. Your local resolution requires March 1st. It also requires we meet with the state attorney, the public defender, the clerk's office, the Office of Regional Counsel. We discuss local requirements and budget needs. We did that. Next. Requires the chief judge to certify necessary local requirements. We sent that off to the chair back on early March. Our proposed budget, as Sheila and Mr. Bishop indicated, 2.149 million. A third of that budget is salaries and benefits for nine employees. Our overall budget is only 0.7% of the constitutional and judicial programs budget. We budgeted flat and everything except for IT. And as I said, our IT department supports, we have IT staff in all of our counties and locations. Really hard when you're purchasing things to say, is this a Manatee County cost? Is this a Sarasota County cost? We buy software licenses, and Microsoft licenses are a perfect example because you get a better price when you buy 400 at once as opposed to 80 for this county and 70 for this county, et cetera. So our IT ask this year was to increase our operating and maintenance costs because what we found is when you added everything up, software licenses, hardware, warranties, training, regular incidentals that IT need, our circuit spends about $625,000 a year on IT to keep everything going. Proportionally, we divided it by the number of users in each of our counties, and that's where we realized in Manatee, we were $117,000 short. So that's where that $117,000 request came from. Last year, we hit DeSoto up for money, and we got $25,000 from DeSoto to cover their portion also. Last year, we also gave you a preview. We expected to start a project, the judicial viewer and calendar development and maintenance. We asked for it this year, and it appears to have been funded. Thank you. This allows the judges to electronically sign orders, file them directly into the state's eportal. Again, three counties, three different clerks of court, two different CMS systems. We have two different judicial viewers. Our online calendaring allows the public to schedule hearings, pushes it to that system, pushes it on the docket display boards that are outside the courtrooms. This is all what we're working on upgrading. Our last big ask was, we are in year three of our five-year plan to upgrade the technology in the courtrooms. But here's the good news. We got some money from the state, where there was some end-of-year state money that the trial court budget commission awarded to us. We got just over $300,000. We have to spend it by June 30th. It is circuit-wide money, but we were able to start the judicial viewer program, start the calendaring program. We were able to buy technology to do two more courtrooms upgraded this year. Like I said, we'll be upgrade, we have to spend all of this money by June 30th, but it was a good thing. Good thing for Manatee County because it's money we didn't have to ask you to do. Bad news is it doesn't affect our ask for next year because we have to spend it right now. The other bit of good news is, you can go back one if you don't mind, Drug Court Lab does generate revenue. We average just about $50,000 a year. This past year, we renovated the lab and didn't have to ask the county for any money. We used our own revenue to help do that, to pay the costs associated with it. So now I'm going to jump, going to do what Mr. Farrington did and switch hats here just for a second. County is responsible for facilities, maintenance, furnishings, and public areas. I really hesitated whether to bring this to your attention, but I feel like I have no choice, especially when I heard yesterday Ms. McLean talk about the county's budget. I know your capital projects are coming up tomorrow for discussion, but we have some ongoing maintenance issues across the street that really need the county's attention. The first one, go ahead. Leaks in the windows and the skylight. If you look at the first picture, we have six bladders, they call them, that are up in the ceilings with hoses running down to trashcans that are on the floors. That picture is on the second floor. Those six screens are the main dockets that everybody sees when they come in and look to see what courtroom do I have to go to. There's one of those in a jury deliberation room. There's two of them on the eighth floor outside of courtrooms. There's a total of six of those. The second picture is not a nice shiny clean floor. That's water running across the floor because the way the water comes in through the windows and through the skylight. We have 169,000 people who come into that building every year, and they're dealing with There is no disrespect to the property management. They know that this is an issue, but it's a big cost, and it is just keep getting pushed and pushed and pushed, and it has to be addressed.
What's the big cost? Have you bid this out?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay, I didn't, you said it was a big cost.
No, they told us, I mean...
I assume that means we had a cost.
They told us that, they call it the storefront because it's that, the whole wall of glass windows that faces the east side. The windows were never proper, never sealed again as part of like an ongoing maintenance is what I was told, and the leaking is just tremendous. It's gotten into the walls. It's gotten into the woodwork. I mean, once that's fixed, then there's all the work of repairing. What's inside the building is going to have to be fixed.
So when did the leaking start?
A long time ago.
So has it...
Long time ago.
I mean, it's, it's pretty much been going on since the courthouse was built, has it not?
The windows leaking, no. There have been other issues with the precast around the outside, and I know that they worked on that. Our building supervisor said it's been at least 12 years, but I don't know.
Okay.
I just know it's a lot.
Okay.
So the next, we also, it's a separate issue is...
Commissioner Seig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Only if Commissioner...
Yeah, let me just ask one more question, and then the, you mentioned like fixtures and furnishings and that kind of thing. Is that stuff worth replacing right now because is it, is it, is the issue that it's damaged by the water leaking or just that it's shabby?
No, it's damaged from the water.
Okay, so we can't really, there's no point in replacing the furnishings until you stop the leaks. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So some of the judges have made this, and the clerk have raised some of the building concerns to me over the past, since I started, so I'm aware of this. I'm aware of, I think Judge Gilbert Smith's office had a leak too, the window seal, as you mentioned, plus I toured the old jail twice, maybe three times, so I know the interconnectedness of utilities there. Plus your infamous garage issue, which trapped...
Which you guys fixed, and it's wonderful now, yes.
We did get positive feedback on that. I think it trapped at one point three judges and the clerk.
And me.
And you.
No, clerk got out. She got out before the door broke. Yeah, no, we, there were six of us stuck there.
So to me, the, this story board, it's, I don't know where these are being tracked, but it is concerning the frequency of these infrastructure failures here. So at some point, I'd just like to see in the budget, where are we going to do, where are we putting, pulling funds from to address these concerns? And they're in my district, so I'm happy to move things around, but Charlie, I'd just like to see what are we doing to address some of these issues? I mean, a leak in the judge's office, come on, of all things.
It's the balconies that are up there. I mean, did this picture, three different judges' offices, and you can see the water that is coming in under the balcony doors, and I know they've tried to seal the balconies to hoping that stops it. It's not that they haven't done things, haven't done anything in the past five years, but it's still, it creates just problems.
Understood.
And then the last, I hate to keep, hate to keep adding to my list, but I'm going to, the chiller. It was considered a temporary solution to put this big giant chiller that's between the Judicial Center and the Historic Courthouse. This temporary solution has been four years. Anybody who parks south, which is where we direct all of our public to park, can't walk between the two. They put a nice walkway crossing Sixth Avenue. There's finally a lane to make it safe with a stoplight to let people cross there, and now they can't walk through. They got to walk all the way around either the Historic Clerk or the Judicial Center. It's been four years. The complaints that we get are not only the ugly hoses and trashcans that are in the building, but the walk-around, and why is this blocked off? So that's an air conditioning issue.
Okay. Well, your budget's not asking for anything personally.
I'm not asking for it. It's a...
I agree.
I just, I felt, I felt compelled to make you guys aware.
Sure, and so we're going to need information to make informed decisions, but we got the county administrator here and our property management, I'm sure, is watching this, so I'm sure they'll get us a breakdown of what needs to be fixed and what the anticipated costs are so we can see how and where and when and what fits into a budget and try to get all that done for you.
And just if there's a plan, like telling people the plan is, it might not be two years out, but we can say at least we know it's on the radar, that would go a long way.
Sure, 100%. So Charlie, you're listening.
Oh, yeah. This building's got a long history. We all remember the scaffolding that was up for four-plus years, the lawsuits that transpired because of the...
Hey, the scaffolding was not our fault.
No, but it was the construction of the facility.
Understood.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's why I mentioned there have been issues since it was built, but...
They're happened.
Maybe don't cram I-beams through the side of concrete buildings in the future when that happens.
You know, we still call it a brand-new building, but it was, we came in in '08. It's not brand-new anymore, but it's a great building. I mean, we love being in there. It's just, we just need a little work.
Sure. We'll get information from property management, and we'll collectively see what we can do to remedy this.
Great. Thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Up next is Office of the State Attorney, Mr. Ed Brodsky.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Phelps.
I'm sorry.
Were you on the board?
I just wanted to say I'm tracking the chiller issue. I heard an update from Carrie Knight Property Management when I started because its businesses complaining too, so I heard a concerning two-year, two-more-years thing, so I've, but I'd like to see what we can do to attack that. That's all I have. Commissioner?
I just wanted to second some of the things that Tal was saying. This issue that we've had with the old jail and the judicial building and all this, I tell you how long it's been. I worked for Folly Bryant when we designed this, which seemed like a good idea at the time, right? And there has been some talk. We had some grants that were found that could possibly do some work to, because it is a historic building, things like that we could do. But I'd really like the board to think more about this gigantic white elephant we've got in the middle of downtown Bradenton. This has been a kick the can down the road for too long. That is a monstrosity piece of real estate that we, we just spent, you know, $34 million to buy a whole new building in East County or, and to relocate. We're talking about adding 131 people to staff, and we've got this monstrosity of a building in the middle of downtown Bradenton that we, you can't sit on it forever. Nothing is going to what? Well, I was. I was talking. So we've had this monstrosity of a building down there. Let's see, I've lived here for over 40 years. It's always been an issue. It's not going to go away, and it's a big sore thumb in the middle of our county seat and our county functions. And I've heard, well, maybe we'll do it floor by floor, maybe we'll, well, it's not a maybe anymore. We can't have that sitting in the middle of our county seat and still utilizing places that actually do cause health issues and harm to our employees. So when we're looking at our overall budget, I think we need to look at some things... that actually do cause health issues and harm to our employees. So, when we're looking at our overall budget, I think we need to look at some things that we need versus we want, and we need to do something about that building. It can't stand there forever being completely useless, and it doesn't matter how much it costs, to a certain extent, you still have to do something about it. It's gonna get worse and worse and more expensive as the years go on. We need the space, we need the parking, and you can't kick it, the can down the road any further. Thank you.
I, I have spoken with Charlie about this some time ago regarding that building for us to make some income. I spoke about it yesterday. I mentioned that we utilize it as an ICE detention center or, because it, I mean, it's the only logical thing that I could think of because we don't have, I, I think, because it was used for that in the past. It was used for that, and they were making millions of dollars every single year for that specific purpose.
Charlie, do you have, do you have any more information about that, about that use and when it was and what exactly they were doing in the, what ICE was doing with that building?
Yes, ma'am. So, when the Judicial Center started construction, it was vacated. Once it was vacated, we lost use of the building, and it's been condemned. Commissioner and I have spoke on this. We'd have to bring it back up to code, which would be very expensive. Also, I've had conversations with Sheriff Wells if it was viable, and it just, it just did not materialize. It's in a very expensive renovation because the building was vacated.
But, the renovation piece of it doesn't have to go essentially up to the specific standards, at the highest standards possible for that renovation. It, it just needs to be as a holding cell, correct?
No, sir.
Based on my understanding?
No, sir. Unfortunately, it has to be brought back up to life safety.
And...
Yeah.
No, no, I get that.
Yeah.
Here's a...
But what I was being told, that it didn't have to go up to the highest standards possible. We didn't have to spend, you know, maybe spend, instead of spending 10 million, maybe we spend five, and then we could recoup that two to three million dollars a year, right? So, that's, that, that was my point, is based on my understanding, that's, that's what I was being told.
So, I, I think that Commissioner Bearden makes an interesting point, and I think if you were to somehow get in touch with some folks from the federal government, they might have interest in providing some funding to, to get that facility up, up to code so that it could be used in that way.
And I did look into it, and I had Folly Bryant do some investigation. Also, remember, there's a childcare center now across the street, and I believe there's a circumference that you can't have a childcare center in a certain radius. That excluded us from the last time, but I did ask Folly Bryant to investigate it, Stu Henderson, and it was just way costly. Again, I think the sheriff can speak to it also. We had a conversation about it.
I, I know this was brought up now twice, so I'll just reiterate. Downtown's in the middle of a transformation, and I don't think bringing ICE, more illegal immigrants is a smart idea downtown. I think there are better places for it, and I do think there are some pretty good ideas our EDC's kicking around. I think they just need a little bit more time to bake, so just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Yeah, we, enough restaurants down here are upset that we're contemplating moving some of our employees out. If we say we're replacing our employees with an ICE detention facility? That, that is spectacular. I, I could just imagine O'Brieks and the lunch specials they're gonna be having with that one. I don't care what Trump agrees with or not agrees with, that's all the ass that I think I've heard so far tonight. Like, I, I personally think it's a terrible idea unless our goal is to get on the news and the cost associated with doing that is so cost prohibitive and so time, I mean, that, that, the whole... Sure, if that's our revenue generation source, then maybe we need to talk to Sharon at our EDC about coming up with better industries for, rather than holding cells.
Well...
Okay, I, I think that's outside the, I, I think this is outside the scope of it. Tomorrow, we do have a CIP discussion, and we will be discussing capital improvement plans, which is inclusive of holding cells in downtown Bradenton, so we could certainly continue this conversation tomorrow.
Was there a holding cell before?
Okay, and we can certainly have that conversation tomorrow within the context of a capital improvement plan.
Can we just all agree that you, you can't leave this un, it's not gonna get any better?
Agreed.
It's not gonna get any better. It's in the condition it's in because of the abandonment, because of the lack of maintenance, and it's not gonna get any better. It's a huge monstrosity in the middle of what we're trying to do as far as having a decent county seat and a decent place for our people to work, so stop kicking it down the road. Whatever the solution is, whether we rent it out, whether we renovate it, as it was once a homeless veterans thing, oh, we didn't want that, and we don't want ICE, and we don't want this. What we really don't want is we don't want this monstrosity of a building that serves absolutely no good purpose, that's not gonna get any better, and it cannot be ignored. I think we could all agree on that.
I, I, I don't, but this is not the time or place for this, unless the state attorney has it in his budget, which is, who is up next? We have a capital improvement project planned tomorrow.
Thank you.
Ed, tell us what you're gonna do with that empty jail.
Listen, there is no way to top that conversation, so it's, it's only downhill from here.
Ed, I did take you over there twice to see if I could move you over.
You did, you did. You did. It is, it is...
Hey, we're, we're clearing Development Services out of here for you.
Yes, yes, thank you for that, thank you.
So, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, County Administrator and Madam County Attorney, Ed Brodsky, State Attorney for the 12th Judicial Circuit. We are in, and I'm also here with my executive director, Jennifer Strawn, so if we get too high levels, she'll take over for me. We are in the recommended budget, so with the items that we did request, so I'm grateful and thankful for that. I can outline it, essentially, this, this county has really shown the important, you know, recognized the importance of Drug Court by funding Drug Court over the last few years, and certainly previous to that, the, the county was supporting us in our efforts through our positions with an Assistant State Attorney and our Drug Court Coordinator. Manatee County and Sarasota County are basically funding half of us of a position, and so in order to keep up with those, that 50% rate for the Assistant State Attorney position, it came down to $12,237. For the Drug Court Coordinator, it came up to $2,0839, so roughly a little more than $15,000. Our biggest ask this year, and in addition, under technology, we had also 47.5% of the salary coming to our IT Director, also shared with Sarasota County and also shared with DeSoto County, but the 47.5% of Manatee County's portion is just a little over $1,000. Our biggest ask this year that was, was recommended in the budget deals with improvements and modifications to our CMS and our accounting system. As all of you know, we serve, you know, a, a large number of law enforcement agencies, and certainly with the technological needs of all of these law enforcement agencies and the advance of the delivery of, of records and body camera evidence and surveillance videos and cellphone extractions, forensic reports and all this, our system has to be able to manage all of these. So, our system and our, our CMS system is, is going through an upgrade, which is actually a program that is being upgraded through many of the circuits across the state of Florida at this time. So, that, that's the largest portion of that request, and so our total request is 123,780, and that's where we are for this year. So, I'll take any questions if there are any...
Essentially, your entire request is that one software upgrade. It's like 122,000 out of 123,000?
Yes.
So, you're not really asked for anything. You don't control what the cost of the software is that you're paying for.
We wish we could. I mean, we certainly negotiate and do the very best that we can to manage those costs, but it's going to bring significant improvements to our system that are, that are rapidly needed with, with the advance of technology and the, the transmission of reports from law enforcement agencies to better serve them and to better serve our attorneys and our community.
Do you have any questions on it? Nope, we're good.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful day.
All right, have a good day.
Commissioner, next up is the Office of Public Defender, Mr. Larry Eager. His approximate budget is 1.4 million. He is requesting two positions, an ECR Attorney and an ECR Coordinator.
I don't know where to start. I guess I can start with, as far as the courthouse is concerned, as I was telling Sheriff Wells, it's never a good idea to cut a hole in a perfectly good roof.
Yes, I agree.
So, there you have that. They had proposed putting our office, the Office of Public Defender's office, in the jail until they realized that poured concrete, poured reinforced concrete is not drywall, so you can't move the walls as easily, and the ceiling was too low to accommodate the air conditioning, so it was a complete nightmare, which is why we are on the seventh floor of the Judicial Center. And please don't think of moving us, because we're quite happy and we've made good use of it.
Your, your office isn't leaking? I, I've heard things.
It really isn't. You're too far to throw the pencil, so with any accuracy, so I won't do that. But in all seriousness, getting to the budget, basically, we're bootstrapping onto what Mr. Brodsky had indicated. Our asks are almost entirely technological. We too are tied to the stack system, so we are bound by them with the clerk's office and other circuits throughout the state, so that increases for technology. The other is for someone who can manipulate that technology, although my IT person refers it to it as a media specialist. We're not in making movies, we're into collecting information, processing it and disseminating it within our own office to the attorneys. So, originally, we had asked for a full-time position, which is presently at 30%, and an additional person. We have in every way possible tried to cull and make our budget as lean as possible, so we have eliminated that entire person, but we would like that 30% person to be advanced to a full-time. So, that's the 70% increase as far as personnel is concerned for that one individual. So, those are really our only asks that we're coming before, and in the spirit of brevity, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you. Anyone on the board?
No, sir.
Looks like most of your costs are software-related. It's understandable, everything goes up. I don't necessarily have any concerns around the personnel additional, addition, well, the upgrading of the position. Public defenders are usually criminally underfunded, so tend to support the need for the position. I don't have anything else, so...
This is very anticlimactic, huh?
All right. You wanna go to the jail?
Sorry? You wanna talk, you wanna talk about the jail?
No.
I love to talk about it.
All right, Mr. Chair, next up is Guardian Lightem, Tony Latorre, Circuit Director. The Budget Department, excuse me, there is only have a $286,562,000 budget. Their positions requested is zero. Also, for their existing positions, also run through the county's payroll.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tony Latorre, and I'm the Circuit Director for the Guardian Lightem office, here with my managing attorney, Amy Clark, and my Assistant Circuit Director, Antoinette Bush. And we don't have, we're fine with our budget, thank you for our positions. We have all of them filled currently. We, we're here, and we were having a hard time filling the attorney one, but we got creative, and we have hired a attorney in training as of June 2nd. And the only thing, I guess, we don't, we don't have an ask, but it's the space is our issue, so we are meeting with folks to walk through, I guess, over here. Our only ask, I guess, would be is if it's not, if it doesn't make sense for us that we don't want to move, but I guess that's more conversation, because I think there's other things going on that I don't, I have no clue of, like, with the space where we are.
I know Brian Parnell's got a meeting scheduled with you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're gonna walk, talk to you and probation.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that's it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Why were you having so much trouble filling the attorney position? Is it the pay?
Um, did you, was it pay?
Amy, is it...
Not, not when we got the increase, no. It was before then.
Okay.
So, when we got the increase, it was first senior level position?
Got it.
And so, when we had the applicants, they didn't qualify for senior level. So, I guess sort of the pay too, because I think that's what we're seeing on the statewide side as well, so entry level is just so much lower, and the county was gonna give us more money, which is great, but we can't take, like, we can't have a state position start lower than the county position for the same qualification.
Totally makes sense.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that. So, do you feel that the attorney position is adequately funded relative to neighboring counties, communities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sympathetic to your space concerns. My wife's a Guardian Lightem, so in the conversations around parking garages and the second building, I do believe you and State's Attorney and a few other offices are marked for at least expansion here somewhere, so you'll get nicer accommodations.
Okay.
TBD, I think that's part of the conversation.
I guess that, so that's fine, and I think it's just my, my aggravation, I'll say personally, is just not being kept aware of that. Not saying that I have to be involved or know what's going on everywhere, but just a little bit of like, we're working on this, we'll get back to you, instead of, there was just some things that was going on that we thought we were going to have it, they were gonna work things out within the space that we're in, because it's enough space, it's just, it's a lot of empty, unused space. And so, we were told we were going to go that route, and then that does get into money and construction and stuff, so I get that, but just to be a little bit more like, hey, we're not gonna go that route, let, just hold on, sit tight, and we'll work something out, so just, I guess we're on that path now, so, thank you.
Hey, Charlie, if you'll, if, if you'll include me in that conversation with Brian on the GAL space, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. With the addition of the clerk's positions and her renovation needs, I've had conversations with the clerk of reoccupying the Hensley Wing for the 12th Circuit Court. Probation used to be in this building a long time ago, and again, I apologize for not, the lack of communication, but the new building came up, kind of kept that under wraps a little bit.
Yep, I got you.
Sir, can I, can I make a comment before we start with the sheriff on the Judicial Center and, and the chillers? So, Cary Knight and Property Management already submitted on May 19 to go to the CIP Advisory Committee to bring to the July 29 the capital improvement project that is going to bring in the repairs for the Judicial Center. Designed first for fiscal year '25 at $577,000, with the schedule to start the construction on fiscal year '27 at $14.8 million. The chillers also, they took $2 million on one of the last board meetings so that they can start the ordering process. It usually takes like a year or so to get those chillers built, but they are moving. We have, we had some set-asides up to $8 million to get some of the more prior chillers in motion for this year for fiscal, in fiscal year '25. I just wanna give you a little bit of an update.
And I just sent an email to Cary and included the chair that we're not gonna wait till FY '27 for any renovations. We're gonna use our emergency PO procurement process, get on this ASAP. All right, up next is Save the Best for Last.
[laughing].
Those who are present. Manatee County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Rick Wells, his budget is approximately $274 million plus. Requested position 64, recommended position 64.
See, I, I see what you do here. You put all these little $300,000 budgets in front of me, right? Makes me look like the bad guy, right? So, Commissioners, thank you as always, County Administrator, Madam Attorney. I really wanna thank Sheila and her staff for, for working with us throughout the entire year, actually. I, I appreciate, appreciate all of you meeting with me individually so we could talk this out, and, you know, I'm just, I'm not gonna get too much into the weeds, because we already have, but basically, we're looking for, for the salaries, we're looking for a 4% increase for the certified side and a 5% increase for the civilians. I'm asking for a total of 64 positions. Three of those are for the executive side, five on the administrative, six investigative, which are gonna be for detectives, CAC detective, and also a, a new crime analyst, and then 34 on the enforcement side, 15 of those being 15 brand-new deputies. We're gonna have to add two new SRO deputies, as you know, we don't control that, we have two new schools opening up, but with that comes a, a new sergeant as well, and so, so the span of control doesn't get out of control. So, we have a 50-50 split, as you know, with, with the school board on that, and then we're gonna add to our cop units to combat and be proactive on auto burglaries. So, then, then on the correction side, 16 deputies, 12 of those will be in the transport side as we become more involved in the day-to-day transport and also on the security side inside our hospitals. So, we have to have a deputy at the hospital any time that there's an inmate. Let me tell you that right now today, my jail sits... Let me tell you that right now, today, my jail sits at about 1,280 inmates. It's, that's about 350 more inmates than that jail had back in 2017 when I first got elected. That's just the way it's going to be. That's population, that's the bond schedule. We're going to have an increase in the daily count at that jail. That's, that's not cost, you know, prohibitive. We're going to have a lot, a lot more food that's having to be served, a lot more uniforms that we have to make for the inmates. The cost is going to go up. So medical is a big part of that. It's not a real healthy clientele that we have in there. So we have to make sure that those needs are met as well. So the total ask is about 12.9%. I think we've gone over everything that I could cover, so I'll just take any questions that you have.
And we've got two people on the board. Commissioner Sidi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Sheriff, appreciate you coming here. This doesn't necessarily even tell the full story because our capital plan includes a number of projects, which I personally support, of course, including the evidence room, properties, well, the evidence storage room. With the amount of growth that we've seen in this county, I think, I've said a couple of different numbers. I think the more accurate ones about we're short 128 deputies. And that's just deputy positions, I understand it, so we're not talking civilian. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me cover that. So even if I lowball that number, I'll say sixty-five, right? If I just say sixty-five deputies short based on per capita, based on the population. And when we, because I know sometimes we have talked about overtime and why do we have so much overtime? Because we're short sixty-five deputies. So if you took that, off the top of my head, if you just took that sixty-five deputies, multiplied it with the salary, no equipment, I mean, that's a little over $5 million that we wouldn't have to spend, right, on overtime? But the men and women, in spite of that, these deputies do an outstanding job. We're 21% down in crime with, over the last nine years. We're 15% down in violent crime right now, right? So 39% down in crime overall in the last nine years if you account for the population. So that's how we get things done. They work overtime, I'm glad that they do. That's how we compensate, right, for the shortage. We're not going to cry about it, we just get the job done.
Right. And SROs, you can't negotiate anyways, that has to happen.
There has to be an SRO in every middle school and every high school. We want it that way.
One thing that was interesting to me is the ICE requirement that the legislature's really thrown up on our sheriff's offices. And I think it's about a six-month on-ramp for training process, so it's not an immediate on-ramp. And then there's still some questions around what's actually going to shake out of that. So do you anticipate any positions or any additional budgetary needs for that in the future?
Well, right now, we've got 77 deputies that are going through the training, ICE, you know, mandates. And then the only need that we may have, and I think we have addressed it with the 12 transport deputies, is the need to have to transport these illegals to different locations throughout the state to help ICE out. Because they can't, we cannot hold them in our jail. There's still, those are, details are still maybe worked out. But ICE will not allow us to hold an administrative warrant that they have inside my jail. We can hold them if they have local charges, but we cannot hold them in the jail if they have just an ICE hold.
Okay. The other concern I had, trend has been over time with FHP only stationing about one to two officers in this entire, for this region, for Manatee County. So effectively, you've also taken on, as I understand it, more, more proactive, more engaged, or deputies not more proactive. You've had to use up more of their resources to investigate crashes, is that correct?
Yeah, we really have no choice, and I love the troopers and I appreciate the job that they do. They're understaffed, they're doing the best that they can. So we just added four traffic deputies just a couple of months ago. We will add at least two more during this budget. And the goal is just to have them work traffic crashes that FHP can't get to. So we don't have people waiting two, three, or four hours out there, you know, waiting for a trooper. So it's, I would love to use those resources somewhere else, but this is important as well, so that's the plan.
Okay. I appreciate that. Up until this time, from our conversations, the, the need has been granted you a significant portion of our budget, but the growth that we've seen in this county is just tremendous. And I did a ride along in District One, the deputy took me all throughout his beat, and it was interesting how long it took him to get around and respond. And certainly, that's part of the country lifestyle, but also the growth that we're seeing there necessitates, in my opinion, certainly more deputies. I think you are getting a new sheriff's substation, or at least it's in the process, near Premier Sports Complex. So that's another thing that's being tracked somewhere.
And really, I have to thank, I have to thank the County Minister, I have to thank all of you for that. You know, you, you see the need, they see the need, even West Side around El Conquistador with, you know, things happening out there that there needs to be a presence. So, you know, it's really your staff coming to me, asking me, hey, do you want a substation here? Do you want one at this location? And I, and I think that they're needed. And I think the more presence we can have and keeping the deputies in those zones all day where they should be, and not having to come all the way, you know, West Side or East Side to drop off paperwork is, is a plus.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. I have a hard time saying no to, to really the requests. I think we're, the response is just over, if we don't fund a certain position, then the answer is overtime for existing deputies. And that's a concern to me after seeing the growth in this county. So I do appreciate you presenting this here.
Well, I mean, I just want you to also understand, when we talk about things that the sheriff's office does, you know, I want to take on fresh start for you. I think that's critical. And I, and I appreciate Commissioner Ballard's leadership on that, but, you know, that's going to, that's going to add some additional positions. But we want to do that. We think that's the best way to, to accommodate the needs of the homeless population. When you look at Sarasota, Sarasota, you know, we, people try to compare us, but Sarasota SO doesn't have SROs. They're, you know, they have their own school police, they don't have crossing guards, you know, their, their needs are different. They don't have to worry about making sure that every school in Sarasota County has, you know, has that security. That's, you know, that's one, one thing that we hold here. And crossing guards are, y'all can have them back if you want. So you want to start talking about crossing guards, that, there's a lot of work there to, to make sure that we have a crossing guard at every location every day. We have about 78 crossing guards in this county, and sometimes we're short. So that means that a deputy has to pick it up, or a CSO has to pick up that crossing, or, you know, a detective will come out and work early to cover a crossing. So that's an obligation, you know, that is huge for us, but there's a lot of work that goes in with that. You wouldn't think crossing guards would be that big of a deal, but they are.
Okay. You raise a good point, especially taking on the additional mission of addressing homelessness in the county. I didn't get to mention that, but that's obviously straight in resources. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCann. Commissioner McCann, you on?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Thanks for all you do, Sheriff Wells. We had this conversation before. Why are we paying 50% of the school board's fees to you? What was it previously?
If I, if I recall, back before the change was made, there was basically there, it may have been around 70% that the school board paid. They paid for wear and tear on our vehicle, you know, mileage, fuel, other equipment needs. I don't have that exact number. And then the, the board decided, going back, I guess, six years ago, with some conversation with the school board, that it was going to be a fifty-fifty split. I don't, I don't know if anyone was even on the board at the time when that happened. So I'm not really sure. That was, that was their negotiation. So, sorry, I can't, I can't answer that clearly for you. Not really sure.
Okay. That's okay. So this is between us and the school board, then? This, this isn't a contract with the Sheriff's Department that we necessarily just have this fifty-fifty split?
The, the board decided what that split was going to be.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, hold on. Couple things.
Yes, sir.
One, I, I do agree. I, you and I spoke and you tried to explain how the county is overstaffing more than you are. So I actually ran an entire sales spreadsheet to figure out the annual growth rate of employees. And you are actually growing on an employee basis, lower than the county as a whole. You've increased employee headcount by 2.4 per year, and the county has increased by 3.8 per year. So you actually are hiring less people. That had nothing to do with my question, it's just that, we, we talked about it on the briefing.
Yes, sir.
So I did run the number after we spoke. I listen during briefings and I like to see, you know, what.
Make sure that we're being accurate. Yes, sir.
So that was more of a clarification. My question on your budget, however, has to do with the two tariff reserves. And we spoke about this at the briefing, too. It seems arbitrary at best. This is the only budget that has it. Our county budget does not have a tariff reserve? And, and the concern, 71% of your budget request is people. I don't, I mean, I'm sure they'll figure out a way to tariff people, but right now, they have not. So you're actually looking at only the residual piece of it, which is that tariff reserve equates to 8% of all the rest of the budget. And if I look at capital, which is really where tariffs would come into play, that reserve equates to 40% of the capital budget. I mean, we do budget adjustments all year round. We have a consent agenda, and every time I show up on this dais, there's some other money shuffling someplace because of a cost overrun or something like that. We're all more than capable of adjusting budgets as a result of economic changes, whether it be tariffs or otherwise, in process. I, I'm curious why we feel the need to have a $6 million cash reserve.
Well, what we came up with, with Sheila, we're, we're just trying to make sure that we're ahead of the game, right? So, so we had, I had Hunter look at every vendor that works with us and, and the, the amount that we spend with them every year and the amount that these tariffs may have an effect on, on our, our current bits. So then we talked with Sheila about maybe just holding $3 to the side, $3 million, I'm sorry, $3, what did I say? $3 million to the, $3.50. So $3 million on the side, if we don't need it, it goes right back to you. But we can do this any way that you want to do it. We don't have to ask for anything unless we need to come back in front of you and, and give you an explanation on why we need to increase.
Sure. I'm just curious, because like, literally, this is the only one that has, it's a $6 million cash reserve that we're budgeting in, that there's lots of requests from lots of people that we're trying to make sure we're honoring while also being cognizant of cash coming in. And that's just one more reserve. We're, we're getting yelled at by holding too many reserves, and now we're coming up with a new reserve button, bucket called tariff reserve that didn't even exist before. I feel we're creating more reserves rather than less.
We don't really care.
Okay.
We just were trying to make sure we didn't have to go, come back. But if we had to come back, I'd be more happy to.
So you're saying if we owe the $6 million reserve, you promise not to come back?
I promise that I will come back. I promise you, I will be back.
I don't know.
No, I don't know.
This is starting to sound a little more attractive.
I'm hoping not, I'm hoping not. But yeah, I, that's, that's up to Sheila and you. We, we are just, we're trying to be proactive here.
Like I said, I, there's a good chance if tariffs all hit and things go up, you're going to be coming back for it. I'm not saying you're not, and I'm not saying there's a problem with it. I mean, costs are costs. It is what it is. I mean, tariffs are taxes, and you're going to pay them, and we're all going to pay them for you. But at the same time, we just had a whole conversation about excess reserves yesterday, and this felt like a new reserve bucket. Whereas I'd rather figure out how best to spend that $6 million or not collect that $6 million. And then when the time comes, you're not going to be the only one. Here's the thing, if tariffs hit you, they're going to hit us. They're going to hit fixing up the building across the street for a leakage where it's going to affect our fleet for our, it's going to affect everyone. This board's going to have to make a lot of decisions about budgetary changes if tariffs all hit to a point where it becomes meaningful. And this feels like 8% of non-employee expenses is meaningful. If we had that same 8% across the board on everything in our CIP project, we wouldn't be building our CIP project. We just couldn't do it, so. Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay. My other thing doesn't really have directly to do with you. It's, it's more indirectly. It's, it's a conversation I've had internally more as a question, and I don't even know how we go out to it. I'm concerned about the state. I'm concerned about taxes getting cut. I'm concerned about homestead exemptions, people talking about property taxes being too high. I'm sure this isn't going to be your favorite part of this discussion, I promise. But at some point, and I know Charlotte County does it, and Lee County's talking about it, and three other counties are informally talking about it. At some point, I feel like we need to have a conversation about putting your budget on as a dedicated millage as opposed to part of the general fund. And, and here's why I'm saying this. First off, as growth goes up and property taxes go up, you just get more money, and you don't have to come in front of us all the time and justify every single little thing, and, and everyone just moves with the flow. But the thing is, nobody in Tallahassee is going to cut a police budget. No one's going, no one here is going to complain about it. If we start getting our homestead exemption cut, and I'll use an example. We get yelled at for spending every penny we spend because everyone assumes we collect six mills and we renovate offices with it. But we don't. We collect, if I take out your budget and I take out debt service, we collect 1.88 mills for like everything we do, from pickleball courts to offices to employees to permitting. That's what's going to get cut. It's like the federal government. The federal government doesn't cut defense spending, the federal government doesn't cut entitlements, and they don't cut debt service. We don't cut your budget, and we don't cut debt service because we can't. We're left with 1.88 to play with. When, nobody yells at the school board, and when they come in and they collect more money than us and they say, we want one more mill, they give it to them because it's kids. When three different fire departments in my time here all said, we want more money, the public voted in favor of taxing themselves more because they think, or know that the fire departments are important. You're important. If we start getting hit by the state in 2026 ballot, it'll be easier to go and propose increasing millage for the sheriff's department than it is to increase millage across the board. I think isolating out your millage, one, is for transparency purposes. I think everyone's, I, in a perfect world, we'd have a trim that broke out every department, but that's ridiculous. But I think breaking you out gives more transparency in terms of what's being spent. People are comfortable paying you the three and a half mills as opposed to paying us six mills. And I think if and when homestead exemptions get increased, like right now, I ran my numbers. If they increased homestead exemption by $100,000, which is one of the bills that was on the table this year, it would literally eat up 100% of my taxes that go toward general government. 100%. People don't understand that. People don't understand what percentage of the overall budget is actually government. So again, that's not a here nor there for you. It's just, that's something I've talked about internally. I've talked to people in other counties. I think 2026 is going to be a ballot initiative for something, and we need to get ahead of that. And one, I'd rather protect your mills, because if it cuts, it's just going to be a prorata, a prorata cut across everyone, which is going to affect your budget, which is going to affect your headcount. And like I said, I think you're under headcount. If you ran, I, I ran these numbers. If you hired people at the same rate we've hired people since I got on this board, you would have 125 more people. That's what my calculation worked out to. So I think you're understaffing for what you're doing, but at the same time, we need to be cognizant of what the state's doing. And I'd rather protect your three and a half mills and bifurcate it out so that when we start having cuts, it's based on the 1.88, and people at the state level and at the local level understand where those cuts are coming from and where those services are justing. If I just cut everyone across the board, it's going to cut your budget. That's just how the world works if it's a straight cut across everyone.
Right.
So I think, in my personal opinion, and I don't know if the county attorney or Sheila wants to opine on it, I think this board needs to discuss breaking out, call it three and a half mills, dedicated your 3.48, so call it three and a half round numbers, to the sheriff and making that a dedicated mill and then having the rest of it the general. So we don't have to keep going over your budget every single year, and the public knows where the money's going from, and we know where our, our cuts can be when the cuts inevitably come because we're not going to want to take it from, from Sheriff Wells.
And it's funny you say that because I had this conversation with Sheriff Wells while we were going over the, the actual briefing. And I think that's a great idea. What he stated was that it has to make sense for him, right?
Right now, you're 3.48, which is the, which is a high mill number relative to previous years. I, I think if we just said three and a half mills, that's getting you your entire budget, including your reserve there, and giving you cushion. And again, as the population grows, you're able to. And that doesn't mean we can't give residual money. I mean, if you've got three and a half, we have a dedicated mill for children's services. We still fund other nonprofits out of other buckets. We have a dedicated mill for the library. We still fund. The number one goal of government is public safety. In fact, that's the only real goal of government. I don't care if you walk someplace if I don't build you enough roads. That's not number one. Number one is you and our EMS and our fire departments. That, in my mind, is the only thing government needs to do properly. So nobody's going to not provide additional funding if something comes up based on extraordinary circumstances above three and a half. Because again, the three and a half doesn't include some of the capital projects, and we're funding those, and we're happy to do it. I just think it, it adds, it's going to add a level of protection for you and a level of transparency for our discussions and public discussions if and when something happens in 2026. So I'd like to get that, we can't vote on anything now, it's a work session. But I'd like to, I'd like to break out three and a half mills dedicated to the sheriff going forward on our trim and our budget so we can have better handle on our budget, and we don't have to keep doing this every single year of this money versus this money and people saying we have six mills for government, so. So that's my personal opinion, that's what I'd like to see.
So sure, I tend to, I agree with that. I approach it from a roundabout way of looking at what are, what's becoming increasingly popular are fees for service, whether it's effectively child services millage or the school millage, effectively levying an additional assessment and putting it to the voters. But what I found is it's, there's a statutory limit to that. I think it's just one mill at most, which is why the IST is only one mill max, but you have a half cent only approved by the voters. So I didn't feel that the numbers could have supported the sheriff in that regard. But I would like to see a presentation, or at least just some more information about what the impact would be to the remaining two and a half mills, because I do think there might be some downward pressure to make up the difference somewhere. But I'd just be curious to see what the numbers would add up to.
But that would be a discretion of the board. We're setting a floor for a budget, which is a reasonable floor based upon historical requests of a budget, and then future boards can discuss. But now we're discussing a few million dollars, we're not discussing 275 million dollars. And now we're understanding those additional funds are coming from something else, what's the trade-off, whereas we don't now. I mean, this is 275 million dollars. I'm happy, I'm going to vote for this. I'm fine with it, we've had our briefings on it. But let's remember, we just cut 500 grand and shut down an entire Sunday program at a library for kids. 500 grand. We went back and forth debating whether or not to hire a second grant writer for 80 grand yesterday, but 275 million, it's like, because we don't pay attention to this budget, nor should we. This is the default. This budget and debt service, we just fund what the request is based upon people who know what they need to keep us safe. But then we haggle over 30 grand on whatever it was yesterday, the plant thing for Charlie. 30 grand we spent five minutes talking about, 275 million dollars, like, keep it up.
No, I'm not disagreeing with them. I think, does it make sense now, five years from now, 10 years from now? I do think it does, because you don't have to come to this board and ask us for a significant sum. It can be a smaller amount. But what I do want to see is just something presented to the board, your numbers, what report you've run, just to get a better sense of what that means for our budget. But also to make sure, and I highly doubt any future board would do this, but I do have to think someday something changes in this board, and then someone wants to show up and reduce that to three mills. I highly doubt that's going to happen. Fairly friendly, law enforcement friendly here. But I do want to make sure what steps are we taking to ensure that that is going to stay three and a half mills at least?
That has nothing to do with this mill. Right now, this, any one of us can pull one of these items off of here this exact minute, whether or not it's a mill number you're pulling, or I want to pull 20 of your employees off here. I just talked about pulling the tariff reserve off here. Right now, we can adjust this budget if we felt like it. A future board having a mill versus a budget has no bearing on their ability to unfund.
No, my point is, my point is long-term stability. If you want to be able to provide accurate projections, whether it's the sheriff's office or...
This is the most long-term stability.
Yeah, this, this, I would...
The exact way of getting long-term stability. It gives him the ability to budget in the future.
I'm fighting, my point is, are we going to ensure that this will remain three and a half? How can we ensure the mechanisms to ensure that can be the floor?
The only way you could do that is to put it out as a ballot initiative with a sunset time, just like we do with environmental land. That's a whole nother ballgame there. I'm trying to explain that, it would be tough.
And I just don't think that's necessary.
I don't think so either.
Because at some point, yes, someone could say, okay, our dedicated sheriff's mill is only two and a half now, but then the sheriff just would come and say, you're not, you're not meeting my needs. I need a section, I need additional funds to come out of the general fund. But I don't even see that honestly as a, as a real concern.
It's not our job to stick future boards with mandates. I mean, our job is to handle our board as it is today. What would you have done if a previous board said, "No, we're capping the sheriff's budget at two," and then you're like, "I'd love to give you three, but some commissioner from 10 years ago prohibits me from doing that." You wouldn't like that. Future boards have a right to dictate how their budget works going forward. We're setting a millage, trying to set a standard, and if that standard lasts for long enough, then it becomes a little bit more normal. Nobody appears pushed to cut the library millage or the children's services millage. I mean, it just becomes part of the budget process.
That 3.5, Chairman, that's an analysis that you ran over how many years?
Well, they're asking for 3.48 right now, and I figure it's a reasonable budget.
Okay, so what typically, God, what do you typically ask for, Sheriff? Is it typically around about the three and a half?
It's been...
The last couple of years?
Yeah. I'll let Hunter give you some data if you want. Come on up, Hunter.
Do you know that, oh, I got you on the spot, brother.
But definitely there, your ask, the sheriff's asks right now have been, have exceeded what in pretty, previous years has been. So the increase of the, what, 63 million, was it? In this budget reflects that mill that the chairman just said. So in previous years, it probably was, you know, 31 million dollars, 31...
Between three and three and a half.
It bumped a little last year, because we had the big pop to readjust salaries. So prior to that, it was, you know, my rough look, it's hard, because there's so many numbers we're playing with, and some of your money doesn't come from millage, and then our millage goes to different places, and our millage is adjusted. So it was high twos, and then it was low to mid threes, and now it's 3.4, which is somewhat consistent with last year. That's our millage has come down, so it's becoming a greater proportion of our millage collection, because we've lowered the millage three of the last four years. But this millage has been a little bit more on an absolute basis.
Got it. So I mean, I mean, basically, historically, we would probably say anywhere between three and three and a half, depending on what board was in place, who you had on staff to be able to present it, and things of that nature. So I think that would be a fair number, would be three and a half across the board to be able to, and you make the decisions, it ain't on us. And that was the discussion that I had with you, Sheriff, was that I don't want, I don't know, you're coming up to me telling me what you need, and I want to provide you what you need, right? So who am I to dictate whether or not you need something or you don't need something? I don't have that data to say, oh yeah, you need X amount, like, because I have no way of judging that. So I think the best way to do this would be, you know, to have that dedicated millage, which we spoke about, and I don't know how we approach this. Obviously, I mean, what would be the next steps for that if you were in agreement with that sheriff?
Look, I believe that changes are going to have to be made, and we're going to have to be creative, and this is a very creative way of looking at a sheriff's budget, which is not the case throughout the state. But all I want to do is to go back, Hunter and I, look at some, you know, historical data, and just try to figure out where we, where were we, where are we now, and where do you think we're going to be in 10 years? That's all I wanted. I just want to take a look at the numbers. I think it's a very creative way to make sure that my agency is taken care of financially, which is the only thing I care about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, this isn't something we had to finalize today, we can't even do anything.
No, I appreciate it.
But I'm just saying, I just think, I think this makes it cleaner.
At least it's not talking to me about the jail, so I'd rather talk about this.
I just think this is a, in my opinion, a cleaner way of doing it. It gives you more assurance, it allows you to align better with the growth rates of Manatee County as it goes. As we grow, then your budget grows organically along with everyone else. It takes that off of us. Overfunding the millage at three and a half, you're at 3.48 now, which is a top end, so we kind of use this as a base mark. That restricts capital from us, which makes us a little bit more thoughtful about our dollars, because now we're no longer, our first question isn't always, what's the sheriff's budget now, what's left? Now it's like, we know what your budget is, it's three and a half, and we know that we're dealing with the residual piece of that. I just think, long-term, it makes sense in my mind.
Yes, sir.
Can I talk about a little bit about the process? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
So I was just kind of thinking, so that would include all the buildings that he would need in the future and everything else as well? That three, that three and a half, for example, if that's the number that we're going with?
It would not. The three and a half, 3.48 now does not include that.
No way.
Okay.
I mean, you have rehabilitate, well, renovations at the jail that are, I don't know if they're even tracked in our CIP. I don't remember seeing those, but medical wing, there's quite a bit that's not tracked.
Yeah, but other people...
They can show up to us, certainly, in the future.
But other people don't go up to Tallahassee and ask for another road to be paved. They go up there and ask for things like medical wings and important stuff, and that also gives the sheriff's department an opportunity to go to Tallahassee and meet with Senator Boyd, meet with Representative Robinson, and advocate for additional funds for additional things, because now they know this is where my millage is, this is what my budget is. If there's other stuff I need, you know, then they can talk to people just like we're talking to people, or we could talk to people on their behalf.
I think it's a good idea.
So at this point, because we start July 1st with the actual trim process, separating the millage will only mean that instead of calling it general fund bucket, it's the sheriff's bucket. So it will be still part of the 6.0826. It's just whenever I present it to the, to the property appraiser for them to itemize it in the trim notice, it will say, it will have an additional row that'll say sheriff. But the countywide operational millage will still be the 6.0826.
Understood, but I still want it broken, here's why I want it broken out, because they're going to start looking at the state level, and the people here are going to start looking and saying, where can the trims come from? And they've already set out there, they do not want to use this as an opportunity for local governments to quote-unquote "defund police." So they're already trying to come up with workarounds on that. So I'd rather get ahead of it and say, "We're helping you with your workaround, we've already isolated out that portion of it. This is what's left. Now if you want to cut, you're cutting off of this little bucket over here, and so if you cut one whole mill out of two mills, you're cutting 50% of my services, where it doesn't look as big if you're cutting one mill out of six." So it's a little bit more meaningful, allows for better conversations with our representatives with Tallahassee's whole.
Understood. So if it's the board's decision, they can put a motion in place now.
But we can't, it's a work session, we can't vote today.
So in the public hearing, you would have to, I would have to let the property appraiser know at some point during the trim process that the board wishes to do this at some point.
It seems pretty straightforward, we can't just bring it next Tuesday or Thursday just so you can work on it over the recess? I mean, because it's a time-sensitive thing, if you need to get it done by July 1st, we're going to be on recess.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
So this doesn't seem like it's that difficult to do.
I would need direction, because once, on July 29th, once you set the millage, the maximum millage, you'll have to probably at that point, we can set that one as a special meeting, and you can give me the direction of break down the countywide millage to include this, to break down the sheriff's millage. And then at that point, I can let the property appraiser know, and we'll make the, that doesn't change how it will...
I think you're getting direction, this ridiculousness of voting seems silly. I mean, everyone up here is agreeing to at least come back for discussion purposes. I don't think it's hard to, somebody, whether it's financial management or county attorney or county administrator, putting something on next Tuesdays' agenda just for discussion that we can formally vote on.
And that's fine, I just need the direction of the board with the vote for me to be able to...
It's not a whole order, it's just directing you how to allocate the dollars on a piece of paper.
There you go. Yep. However, you want to do it as long as it's done and open.
We have a question for you, well, since we're talking about this too. First one, impact fees. So I just wanted to clarify, since we just, the new rates will take about 90 days, assuming something holding that up, but we're talking about the same impact fees we charge for development, ensuring that those funds go towards paying for some of the growth. Part of that going to the sheriff's office, correct? There's a line item on slide 17 at least, at the end.
For the CIP?
No, Sheriff FY26 recommended budget. Just wanted to clarify, those are the same impact fees we're talking about.
The law enforcement impact fees are those that are in that slide, yes.
And they're part of the increases that we've voted on, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, good. So there's a little bit more funding coming there, and then unincorporated MSTU. So we're talking about carving out a portion of our county millage, not inclusive of the MSTU, but a significant, well, the sheriff serves the unincorporated portions of the county plus Anna Maria Island, sorry, City of Anna Maria. The only thing I'd probably throw out there is how can we make sure there's a little bit of, what the impact to the unincorporated MST would be? Well, not impact, but how would we kind of balance out collections to make up for the services that are being rendered in unincorporated portions? Does that make sense? Sorry? Okay. Because we talked earlier this week, it hasn't functionally changed since '08, but it does go into the sheriff's budget, so.
The unincorporated MSTU only pays 10% of the sheriff's budget.
Okay.
The rest is the general fund.
All right, so that's something to think about then. Are we also factoring that into the millage that we're looking to carve out?
So that would, that would represent an increase in millage, so that's something that would have to be, that really have to be voted in as an increase in setting an increase in millage for the unincorporated, because the unincorporated MSTU is not part of the 6.0826. It's a side.
That was a concern I had, so we're, the 3.5 might not be inclusive of the funds coming in from the MSTU, so somewhat problematic, but...
The 3.5 is inclusive, it's just 3.5, right? The 3.48 mills is 3.48 mills regardless of whether it's the six or the six. We're not doing this on percentage, we're doing this on an absolute dollar.
But she's saying there's 10% coming from the unincorporated MST today.
The 10% only comes from the, so yes, I did, when I calculated that 3.5%, it did include a piece, that was the portion that's funded with the today's .6109 of the mill, yes, of the unincorporated.
But a mill's a mill. A mill's a mill.
Yes, but the assessed...
The .15 mill environmental land tax isn't, well, .15 of unincorporated and this much of incorporated and this much of, it's .15. It's a hard number, you're multiplying it by taxes.
Yes, but on the millage, on the trim, you are correct, a mill is a mill, but in the trim process, I have to separate both into the different documents.
It would just be, it would be point, it would be 2.8 on one and .7, I mean, it would still, it would aggregate to 3.5, it's just you would break them out into two.
That is correct.
Yes.
And the end, and then the calculation, because the assessed values are different on one versus the other, the calculation is kind of like a little bit smaller on the unincorporated side.
Calculations different, balancing, so...
I can break it out between one and the other, so you see the impact. It's very minimal.
Okay. Because unincorporated pays for other services too, so just making sure we can balance that out.
Right.
Thank you.
Presser Feltz, you want?
I'm good.
Okay, she's not. All right, is there anything else? All right, we're good.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I hope the tax collector doesn't take us long.
You don't have to worry about that.
I don't know if I've ever seen it here. What?
No, they won't be present, no. I would like to go back to what Commissioner Sadek's on his resurfacing for major roads, if I may. I just want to clarify what they have currently and what you are envisioning for that increase to want, want to be, okay? Currently, in fiscal year '26, Public Works and all these, these ones are funded through gas taxes. The local road resurfacing program is at, for maintenance, is $4.6 million. However, we are increasing that number for the local roads by another million, a million 150. The major roads, they would, currently, they are funded at $3.5 million, and they are increasing that by $550,000. Bridge rehabilitation currently is funded at $1.6 million, and we are increasing that for $1 million. So, beyond what those increases have been given, is that what you are suggesting, Commissioner? Or you would like to see more?
So, I'm, I'm not expecting 100% funding, but a couple of data points. So, one, when I started on this board and I had this conversation with Public Works, what was a concern to me was, I don't think we actually understand the full scale of the surfacing challenge. And I'm not saying you have to start from the most, I'm not saying every road is, you know, you have to start from rebuilding the base and moving upward. That's very expensive. But what was concerning to me is we don't have a full inventory of all county roads. It's a best practice, not required by statute, but it is a best practice to have that. I did not, I mean, I was told that we don't have one effectively. So, we're working on essentially recreating that. So, I don't, one, I don't think we fully understand the scale of the problem. But two, I've made, we do have a website for resurfacing. It's fairly lopsided in my favor in a way. It's not helpful to me. But I just wanted to point that out in terms of the amount of roads coming in the next four fiscal years. I also didn't see an update in the budget beyond FY 30 to that list. So, I, to me, I think if you don't know what roads to, to resurface, you're, don't have an idea what you need to fund. I think with the amount of county roads that we do maintain, we're more than likely underfunding it. But when, a typical example of how much counties will put aside for resurfacing, and this isn't exactly a perfect metric, but it's typically $100 per person set aside to resurface roads. Today, if you look at, what is 4.6 times divided by the, you know, the amount of popul, population we have, we're setting aside about $10 per person for resurfacing. And I've also been told we're competing, the funds are competing, the funds for resurfacing are competing with new road construction. So, I'm not saying we need to go up to 100 from $10. But, one, we need to put a concerted effort behind putting that list together, so that's more of a Public Works directive from someone. But two, I think that $10 needs to go up. Again, I, I think it's, it's not clear by how much, but I'm thinking $20 to $30 at least per person dedicated. But that's obviously going to come into this. CIP might have to factor in at that point, too. So, there's some data points to mull over. We don't need a final decision now. This, we're voting on this in July, and I'm more than happy to have follow-on conversations. But since this is more spur of the moment, we're likely not going to have a higher-quality discussion on it. But I thought I'd just share some numbers and how some other counties are tracking dollar per spend on, per person on, you know, road resurfacing.
Understood. All right. So, you don't, there's no action at this point?
Well, I think we need to go from $10 to at least $20 per, per person there, so. Yeah. Nine, 10 million.
I'll discuss that with Public Works.
Okay. I'll just say at least double now.
Okay. We'll do. All right.
Thank you. We don't get impact fees. No, District 2 doesn't get impact fees.
Nope.
So, are, are you done with today?
At this point, we are, we are done with our presentation of the.
Commissioner Felts, did you have something you wanted to talk about? You said you wanted to talk before we finished.
I have some concerns about our, our stormwater issues. And as Charlie just explained to me, we're kind of splitting stormwater between two departments. And I, I'd just like to throw something out there that as we're, we're looking at rearranging, reorganizing some things, I, I just think that it would benefit us to create that as a separate department versus the two sides of it, only because we know we have beginning projects on it, ongoing maintenance, how it's divided now. But this is a, we're, we're talking about stormwater fees and coming up with all of this stuff. I'd just like maybe to pull those items so that we have a discussion on maybe considering stormwater to have a one concise apart, department versus where we're splitting and moving some money around right now.
I, I would look at Sarasota County, because they're literally doing this exact same thing right this exact second.
And there's a reason for it, because, you know, we, we've, you know, it, it, again, it depends on a hurricane season. But with all the changes and, and the growth that we've had, it's, it's a, it, it's, needs its own plan. It needs its own budget, and it needs maybe one cohesive group handling those things right now. I mean, it may be something that in a few years, we decide to incorporate our stormwater with our, you know, Public Works or with utilities. But right now, that seems to be, just, just like we were just discussing with the, the sheriff's budget. I, I totally agree that that should be a part of our millage, and, and it's a way that it keeps up with, with growth on an independent basis. I'd like to see our stormwater items pulled and the consideration of forming a separate department for that.
And I can bring that back July 29th.
All right. I start and open a public comment, even though literally nobody's here. Is there any public comment? And no one's on the phone. I will close public comments. Kenny Minister, do you have any comments? County Attorney? Commissioner Bearden?
Nope.
Commissioner Ballard?
Nope.
Commissioner McCann? Commissioner Sadek?
No, nope. No comments at this time. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sadek?
Just briefly. So, something came to mind after I was reviewing the budget and watching the meeting again yesterday. So, sent this to Courtney. So, one of the concerns it had was in public safety. I know we didn't get to actually ask any questions or poll anything, and I'm not polling anything. But we're funding effectively critical full-time positions from reserves, which is just a temporary bucket from, for us to pull from. So, I suppose I just wanted to hear long-term, what are our plans to fund those from the budget as opposed to pulling from reserves? That's probably the biggest contributor to any requests to pull from reserves or small requests like $30,000 from Natural Resources. I think our total asks from reserves that I could track were just 2.3 million across all departments. But my concern was refunding eight positions, no, actually. At least, at least 16, 20 positions from reserves. And through 2027, without necessarily a plan to turn them into, well, positions we're not funding from reserves. So, I just wanted to hear what the plan was there.
So, the id, the idea is, one, the EMS stations that are going to be housing these staff members are not ready or even completing completion until sometime mid next year. So, once those are completed and all that, they will be pulling it out of reserve so they can do the, the hiring, the training, the appropriate, all the steps that they have to do to bring those folks into motion. When those facilities open, that normally is a standard that we do. Because what happens if instead of 20 people, they need 25 people? And then, they're still short. Once they realize finally what is real, the real need for those stations. So, I would prefer then that they come not to just, not to ask for the position, because they're already approved in the budget in that manner, but to bring the explanation of if they need more, if there's operational costs that needs to come with that in addition, or so forth.
Okay. I'm, I'm, just like we, the conversation we had with the sheriff, I'm fairly certain we're not capturing the full needs for EMS, especially in those regions. So, my concern is with how much we've, with the hurricanes damage and the fact that we've taken out a line of credit. Are we setting EMS positions up for failure by not giving them a dedicated funding source as opposed to, well, today, it's just reserves, which I don't think we're going to spend that money down. But I'm just saying philosophically, we should fund those positions.
It is, it is a standard process that we've done in the past. I mean, it's a decision of the board if you want to move them up, waiting for a full year, just sitting those vacancies in there. Or, I mean, it is just up to the decision of the board. Now, there is a dedicated funding, because I can't pull those positions out of that reserve until, because it's fully designated for public safety. Nobody else, I cannot take it until I come to the board and say, I either going to use it for that or not use it at all. So, it is the vote of the board who decides when to come, approve pulling it out of there.
Okay. I just wanted to get a sense of.
So, the general fund right now at this point is the one that's, where that is reserved.
Okay. Just wanted to raise that point, if there's any concern.
Yeah. The threshold normally for set-aside reserves, and I've talked about this in reserves, is that we cannot go over a 10% total. So, it's still under that threshold that we're meeting, and that is part of that.
Okay. I don't see any concern around that, so I think we're fine.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, Commissioner Felts. All right. With that, then, tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM, Capitol Improvement Project, the last of our three-day cycle of budgets. See you in the morning.